So you can take it to any vote center in your county. You don't have to go to just one place. It's anywhere in your county. So you go, well, how do I learn where these vote centers are? So glad you asked. So there is a website that says eservices.sccgov.org/rov. That's your Santa Clara County Government Register Our Voters. And there's a cool QR code that you can take your phone and snap that, and it will take you right to this website. You type in your address. You say, hey, tell me the vote center is the nearest me and the nearest five miles. Obviously, this is an old one because it says March 3rd and it should say November. But you get the gist. It'll be the right election. You click on go, and it will show you a list of all of those vote centers and drop boxes based on what's closest to the address you typed in. So it's a nice thing. The other big thing I want to point out on the vote centers is scheduling wise, you can vote for four days now at any of these vote centers. You can go in person. You can drop off your ballot completed, or you can go in and vote in person. So the vote center will be open October 31, November 1, November 2, and November 3. So you've got four days that you can vote in person. You can also go to the register our voters office at 1555 Burger in San Jose. So many ways that you can actually vote. Just don't wait till the last minute to drop it in the mail, okay? Good. So one of the other things that's super important is, of course, you need to register to vote if you're not registered. There's a very simple website, registravote.ca.gov. And you type in your information and they will get you registered right there online. The sooner you do this, the better. Please don't wait till the last minute to do this. Yes, you can technically register on election day, but you already know it's coming. Please, please, just go do it now. Go get registered now if you're not registered. And if you want to check on your registration status at that same website, there's a box that says, check your registration status. We strongly encourage you to do this to make sure everything is clean for your ballot. That will give you the information that, yes, you're registered. If you get this button that says retry, there's a problem, and you definitely want to go re-register again. Once again, you can do it on this site at register to vote, or you can go into the registrar's office in advance or the vote center once they open. So there are a lot of things on the ballot. You've got your candidates. You've got your ballot measures. There's a great website we wanted to tell you about that really simplifies things. Votersedge.org. It's a fantastic website. We are proud of it because we're part of it, but it's put on by the state, the League of Women Voters California. And it's a joint venture with a company called Maplight. And what we do is we check the factual information. We enter it into there, and Maplight finds the money behind the measure and behind the people. So you can see who's donating what. It's just a great way to get some correct information on the ballot. Having said that, there are a lot of great websites that are fact-checked, and we strongly encourage you to screenshot this or take a picture with your phone. This is a very, very valuable list of great websites. We've got the state level league, but you've also got our local one, lvvcs.org. Once again, this forum and all of the forums that we're doing will be on our website. Right there on the front page, you'll see the section that says candidate forums, and then below that, it will say the ballot pros and cons. But you've got Balladopedia, sorry, Balladopedia, balladopedia.org, Easy Voter Guide, Voters Edge, LAO is the Legislative Analyst Office, Secretary of State, and the California Votes. So a lot of great websites that you can use. So District 6, as you know, this is our first time voting for District 6. So I thought it would be helpful to have a map that shows what are the boundaries. And you can see it's pretty straightforward. It's mostly 101 and above that. Got a little bit of area down in Matilda and Central and Evelyn. All of this is available to you if you go to the Sunnyvale election page at the sunnyvale.ca.gov site. There's a section that says, find my district. You can click on that. If you go to votersedge.org and you type in your address, it will show which district you're in because it'll show the candidates that are running for your district. So what's on your ballot is on that website. So definitely figure out if you're on District 6. And if you are, we've got great news. There are three candidates running. We have Omar Dean. We have Lea Melman. And we have Charlotte Thornton. Unfortunately, Charlotte could not join us tonight. I want to take a quick moment and show you the websites for Omar and for Lea. So both of them are Omar for sunnyvale.com and Lea for sunnyvale.com. So with that, let me turn off the screen share and we'll get our candidates here. Hello, hello, welcome.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Excellent. So what I want to do briefly is give a little bit of explanation about the ground rules. So let me catch up on my script here. So our candidates, as you can see, are here and ready to go. They have agreed to a set of ground rules. And basically, what will happen is the first question, they will answer. They'll have 90 seconds each to answer it. We did do a random drawing for the first question to see who will go first. We'll tell you that in just a moment. But I wanted to point out, we do have a timer. And so the timer helps guide them on how much time they have left. So Bruce is our timekeeper, and he's known as Mr. Timer tonight. And he will show you 30 seconds, 15 seconds. And then when you see that red stop, please wrap up your comments and we'll go on to the next question. All right. Very good. So let's see here. We have, oh, one other thing I wanted to point out is you do each have one rebuttal. It's 30 seconds long. You don't have to use all of the time. If you're very succinct, it's okay. It's okay to be succinct. But your questions, you know, the rest of them will be 60 seconds. The rebuttal of one of those is 30 seconds only. All right. And so just remember, raise your hand like that. Let the person finish, and then I'll call on you to give your rebuttal. All right. So we have had a lot of questions come in. As I mentioned earlier, we're over 20 questions. But once again, if you'd like to type them into the Q and A, where we will do our best to add those to our list. And so, as I mentioned, we are going to start in random order. So randomly drawn, Ms. Lea Melman, you get to go first. And so your first question is, what are your qualifications and what do you hope to accomplish as Sunnyvale District 6 Council member? Once again, you have 90 seconds.
Okay. My name is Lea Melman, and I have been serving you on your Sunnyvale Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for the last two and a half years, where I'm presently the vice chairperson. I also have a very long history of public service, both as EMS, as an EMT in a previous life, and also as part of a federal disaster response team, as well as California wildfire EMS response team. I also have a background in finance, previous life before I became a nurse. And I also have worked in many other kinds of situations, retail, in education. I think I've been working since I was about 13, including cleaning stalls to pay for my riding lessons. So what I bring to you is a wealth of varied experiences, an honest and earnest desire to make Sunnyvale an affordable, sustainable, welcoming city for all. I want to ensure equity and justice. And I also want to make sure that we continue to grow and meet the needs of the present as well as the future.
Okay, can I jump into it or?
Sorry, I muted myself.
I'm done.
Didn't want to cut you off, but yes, to start it off, first of all, thank you so much for opening this up and for hosting this discussion tonight. So a huge thank you to the League of Women Voters. But my name is Omar Dean, and I'm running for city council in District 6. And the first qualification I want to mention is that I was raised in Sunnyvale. My parents immigrated to the area in the 1980s. And so, you know, they landed in this area. I was born in San Jose. We moved here right afterwards. And I spent almost my entire life here in Sunnyvale, seeing what it actually looks like, what the city's policies are, how they impact people at every stage of their lives. But I also come in with many different qualifications. First and foremost, I was lucky enough to be a fellow on Congress member Mike Honda's 2014 campaign. And throughout high school and even middle school, I spent most of my free time involved in community organizing and volunteer work, attending protests with my siblings in San Francisco, getting involved with local nonprofits and civic centers and volunteering. And after that, I worked in Assembly Member Evan Lowe's office and actually served the city of Sunnyvale as a member of its Parks and Recreation Commission when I was 18. After that, I went and studied public policy at Cornell University. So I actually got that academic foundation in policy work, and then worked for a bit as a finance analyst at a tech company. And now running to fight for a more livable and affordable Sunnyvale, which we're going to go into in depth as this discussion continues. But with that, I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So our first question then goes into the different topics. And this is on the city and COVID and the response. And we'll start with Omar. So what is the role of the city in recovery, resilience, and regeneration as we deal with the COVID-19 crisis?
Yeah, I think this is, sorry, what?
Sorry, just want to make sure you knew you had 60 seconds.
Okay, perfect. Well, yes, I think this is actually one of the most important parts to start on because it's an issue that's affecting us right now. And as is likely the case, going to affect us for most of 2021. And the city has a huge role to play in it. First and foremost, as a county and state, give us the okay to open back up again. It's on the city to double check the data. We need to be crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, making sure it's actually safe to reopen and that we do it in a way that prioritizes public health. But if we're forced to go back into lockdown, providing public resources for working families and small businesses that are affected, including, you know, replanting the Sunnyvale Cares program and advocating to the county on the eviction moratorium because many residents are going to be struggling with paying rent and keeping a roof over their head moving forward.
Thank you. Lea?
Yes. This is very difficult because it is an ongoing disaster, and it's very hard for the city to determine what steps they're going to need to take once we come out of this. Firstly, I agree that we need to make sure that we shore up programs for Sunnyvale cares, that the city continues to provide laptops and Wi-Fi accessibility to kids, especially of low income and less accessible families so that they have safe places where they can do their schoolwork and not fall behind, which are the critical things. And then finally, we also need to have a business plan as part of the opening up process for shoring up those businesses which are in crisis, whether that is, you know, looking at grant funding or other sources to assist small businesses in that sort of effort that, you know, that remains to be seen. And of course, finally, we need to liaise with the Santa Clara Public Health Department to make sure that we are following all the appropriate medical guidelines in regards to COVID and that we ensure public safety first and foremost.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll start with Lea. And this question is, Sunnyvale has an aging population. In light of the passing of the Active Transportation Plan, how will you support those that can't get on a bike or walk very far?
Okay. This is an area that I understand very well, having to deal with people in all sorts of abilities across their lifespan. Firstly, we need to make sure that we have safe sidewalks, which are ADA compliant with wheel curb cuts so that people who are using adaptive mobility devices have the ability to get around on them safely. We have a lot of sidewalks that have lampposts in very odd places and are also kind of narrow for even, you know, for standard wheelchairs, let alone the newer motorized kind of devices. The other thing we need to make sure is that we have areas of appropriate signage to make sure that people have, you know, directions to the transit, so that they know where they're going and that mostly that we have safe routes to get them there.
Thank you, Omar.
Let me make sure I'm not muted. Okay. Yeah, I think I agree that this is also a really important and personal issue. And that's because, you know, growing up in Sunnyvale, I've seen my parents age. And right now, they're still living here. They're going into that last, you know, part of life themselves. And so I really feel for them and believe that part of the work I want to do on councils make this city one that benefits my parents and helps them. And to that end, I think we really need to be strengthening public transportation for those elderly citizens within our communities that might not have car access, making sure we have a robust public transportation system, especially because the city has a say on the region's control of the VTA and of public transportation. And along with that, like we heard, making sure we have safe sidewalks, that the sidewalks that aren't connected or have issues with them are getting fixed. And this is especially important because due to COVID, we've had to cut back on those city services. So as we, you know, reemerge from COVID, making sure that that's something we're thinking about and figuring out creative ways to get funding into that and reopening it in a timely manner.
Thank you. So this next question, we'll start with you again, Omar. And this one is, what will you do as a council member to eliminate any racial and social injustice in our city?
Oh, yeah. This is a huge question for me because if I am lucky enough to be elected, I'll actually be the first South Asian. And I think only the fourth ever Asian elected to city council. So ideas of representation and racial equity really hit home for me. I think one of the big things that we need to do is create an Office of Intercultural Affairs and have a dedicated staff member to it. And through that office, creating programs to help our minority communities across our city to get them access to grants and to funding, and to have events across the city that celebrate our multicultural heritage, not just from the South Asian communities, but from the Asian communities, from our Hispanic communities, and from our Black communities. And as we've seen from the Black Lives Matter protests, our Black brothers and sisters across the country do not feel included in government decisions. That was why I was really proud to support the Black Lives Matter movement and attend its protests. And will be taking those values with me to city council if I'm elected and making sure that those voices are heard.
Thank you. Lea?
So one thing I took away from the Black Lives Movement, and which I think is very appropriate, is that we should have a citizens oversight commission of some kind on our public safety department. Although our public safety department is unique in its setup in that we combine EMS and police as well as fire together in one unit, that doesn't mean that it doesn't have issues. And in fact, the city has had in the past that there are a listening session that they started recently with communities of color that felt, you know, that had legitimate grievances. So I think we need to have, you know, more regular sessions with that kind of thing. We need to ensure that we have community oversight of our public safety. And we also, as far as businesses goes, need to work with the Chamber of Commerce to create, you know, a development corp, you know, a program for businesses that are owned by minority groups or start as a startup incubator.
Thank you. All right. So now our next question, we'll start with Lea. And this one is, in light of the COVID-19 and the loss of revenue, what city projects currently in the pipeline do you think need to be cut back in order to reduce future expenses to offset the lack of income in the city?
Okay. Well, budget is a big issue. First of all, because we are still in the middle of this disaster, and we don't know yet what the long-term effects are going to be on our budget. There are many different theories in terms of how long recovery may or may not take once the, you know, emergency conditions are lifted. So I think that we need to be realistic about the, you know, the Civic Center project. I don't necessarily think we should cut that because, you know, this is facilitating a green building, which is actually going to save the city money in the long run. I think we certainly need to make sure that we do not, you know, cut any city staff jobs or eliminate any pensions or benefits which they might otherwise receive. Certainly, a hiring freeze on additional staff is something we can explore. And then we've already begun to cut back on city services, except for those, you know, provided by contracting services. So we are looking at just limiting, you know, street paving and tree care to, you know, city staff.
Thank you. Omar?
Yeah, I think, when I think about financial issues, and I'm glad to get a question about the budget because I see financial issues as my bread and butter, so to speak, because I spent my, you know, first job out of college and the one that I did right before deciding to run as a financial analyst at a tech company. So making credits and debits equal out is something I have a lot of experience in. And if elected, will bring to the table. I think in terms of what needs to be cut, it is really hard to say while we're in the middle of it. You know, we could have a very strong reopening that only takes a few months, or it could be much longer. So knowing how that's going to impact us needs to happen while it's actually happening, while those decisions are being made. The budget has many funds and funding sources. So the general fund is being hit hardest right now. 50% of its revenue comes from property taxes. And property taxes have a latency period where the things that are happening right now will actually affect it in a few years. So those effects on our budget will actually be felt, maybe even after the COVID-19.
Sorry, I'm going to ask you to go back and repeat your sentence. I just lost your sound. I don't know if others did, but if you don't mind saying that last sentence?
Yeah, I was saying that 50% of the city's budget comes from property taxes, which has a latency period built into it because of the way that economics works. It'll take a few years for those changes to impact us. So we have to beware of those and plan for those. And along with what needs to be done and programs need to be cut back, I think hiring freezes is a big one during the pandemic, reducing city services such as tree trimmings and sidewalk repairs, and also postponing park renovations.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, good. The next question that we have, Omar, you will be going first. And this is on COVID in the schools. How would you support school-aged children with their need for low-cost internet that there is equity in education during and after COVID-19? And what would be your approach to the citywide Wi-Fi for all since basic Wi-Fi could be ubiquitous and free for all?
Yeah, no, I think this is a really important question, especially in this forum, the District 6 forum, because District 6 doesn't have the same level of fiber optic access or cellular data as other parts of the city because that hasn't been prioritized by council or a lot of these big companies that are coming in. To that end, I think council really needs to look into creating a fiber optic network throughout the city, especially within District 6. And I say this because my little brother is 15 right now. So he's actually doing school through a laptop, doing it online, dealing with our, you know, honestly terrible internet at my family's home. Along with that, we need to be working with the library to maybe even put funding there to create a program to give out mobile hotspots to students and give out laptops to students who are affected by it because it really does become an equity issue and one that affects students for years, if not their entire lifetime to come because the things that they're doing now have such a big impact on their opportunities. So strengthening their educational access is so important.
Thank you. Lea?
Yes. Before moving up to Sunnyvale, where I've been living for the last 14 years, I lived for six years in San Diego, which has fiber optic service throughout the city. They can do it, we can too. We can do it with a mix of public and private partnerships. Certainly, fiber optic access is a major issue. In fact, in the mobile home park in which I live now, we did not have fiber optic cable or high-speed internet of any kind until about three and a half years ago. So that, and I would not be able to work from home were it not for the fact that we finally got it in the park. And it took, and it was such a long time getting there. And I know there are other parts of the district that are in the same situation in their mobile home parks. Certainly, the newer apartment buildings probably are not feeling the same effect. But definitely, I would support fiber optic networks throughout the city and, you know, free Wi-Fi as a way to address the equity issue. The other thing is the city needs to continue to subsidize laptop distribution for those students who cannot afford or who's family income cannot support the cost of home Wi-Fi.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the next one, Lea, you'll go first. And this question is on traffic. So it says, on June 30th in 2020, the city council voted to close one lane of traffic on Tasman Drive between Pear Oaks and Lawrence Expressway. Are you in favor of removing that lane permanently? And what would be your reason for making this choice?
So first of all, we have to thank Ari Fine Smith, a very persistent young man, for lobbying, I guess, and ensuring that that lane closure was done so that we have a safe place for people to walk to and from the only grocery store that's in the area. Everything else is south of us in El Camino. So as a matter of fact, I have introduced, and it's not on the public record yet, but it will be in the next VPAC meeting, a study measure for permanent lane closure in each direction on Tasman Drive. That is to provide sidewalks in both directions, which are wide enough to accommodate pedestrians and their accessory vehicles. We have a guy who lives in one of the parks who actually goes down the street in his little motorized wheelchair scooter. So, you know, that kind of thing has to stop. And then if we can, to accommodate bike lanes as well. This is a residential community. There's no reason why we have to have a 45 mile an hour two-lane street going through the middle of it.
Thank you. Omar?
Yeah, I mean, I want to start by echoing the same applause for Ari. I mean, it's really endearing and it gives me so much hope to see a fellow Gen Z-er and teenager getting involved in local politics and local governance and shaping their community. And it's such an important issue because just last week, we saw two pedestrians get hit by a speeding vehicle in that area, which is why honestly, I was very happy to have in the past advocated in favor of this lane closure to council. And I did it because while I was at Cornell studying public policy, one thing we learned about were natural experiments. And this is when you get a situation where you can actually experiment a policy idea that's just occurring on its own. And that's what this gave us, you know, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, less people were driving, we had an opportunity to do it. So as we move forward, the main thing I want to look at is the data. Now that we've conducted this natural experiment, let's look at the data during council meetings. Let's have staff do a presentation to us. If the data supports it, then I am completely open to keeping that lane closure going forward.
Thank you. Okay, I see your rebuttal. So Lea, you have 30 seconds.
Yeah, I would say, since this is a pet project of mine, that the VTA did do a study on the street. And the reason why they rejected adding a sidewalk was because of the reason of taking out the trees, the existing trees, or slowing traffic. Now that we have the Active Transportation Plan and Vision Zero, we have the ammunition now to ensure that this kind of change can be done, which prioritizes human safety over vehicular traffic.
Okay, thank you. All right. And now we will go with Omar on this next question. And this is extra data. Let me give you the background. So it says, prior to SB 999, if a mobile home lease was for more than 12 months, it was exempted from local rent control. After SB 999, which just happened, mobile home tenants will have the right to refuse to sign a lease for greater than 12 months. That means a local government could impose rent control for those tenants. So the question is, would you be for or against rent control or stabilization for Sunnyvale mobile home parks and homeowners, and why?
Yeah, I think protecting our mobile home parks within Sunnyvale is so important, especially within District 6, which has a huge and vibrant mobile home community. And I'm open to moving rent control through the study issue process. But we have council making a decision in the next few weeks before the election about going forward with an MOU or Memorandum of Understanding process. Now, if council decides to go forward with the MOU process, it has a six-month period to actually happen and occur. And I wouldn't want to see rent control happening at the same time. I'd at least want the MOU process to complete first and then rent control be explored because having both simultaneously isn't something that I think is feasible because they're mutually opposing paths forward to deal with the issue. But the issue definitely needs to be dealt with because it's one of the last remaining affordable housing options. And I say affordable in air quotes because of how expensive the region is. But it's one of the last remaining options in this area.
Thank you. Lea?
Yeah. The reason why I moved into the mobile home park was when I first came into the Sunnyvale area, I got sticker shock. I mean, even living in San Diego for six years, I got sticker shock when I realized that I would have to pay, you know, starting at a half a million dollars for 850 square foot of condominium space. And so I found a very nice mobile home park, and I'm very happy that I live here. However, there are many residents here who have fixed incomes who cannot deal with the rent issues as they are now. So actually, you know, I've thought long and hard about this, and I believe that we should go with rent stabilization. And the reason why is because we already have residents who are technically underwater on their mortgages because their lot rents are so high. So they're actually lost whatever equity was gained by the local increases in real estate prices on their mobile homes. And so we need a way to actually mitigate the effects of these major rent increases as soon as possible because it's not fair to those people who have been living there for 20 years or more.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, our next question is having to do with work from home. So it says, due to the COVID-19 work-from-home policy, do you think that companies will allow more employees to continue to work from home? And if so, how do you think that will affect things like the Moffett Park specific plan? And what would you recommend that the city do about continuing at this time? And so I forgot to say who's going first, but Lea, it's you.
Okay. Can I just say that I am thoroughly sick of working from home at this point in time? I used to work from home on two days a week, and then I would bicycle commute to my job in Palo Alto. But I really miss my coworkers in my company, and I miss the camaraderie, as well as the fact that I was on my company's well-being committee. And I really feel powerless to assist my coworkers in that right now. So yes, I think there definitely should be flexibility in working. I think that giving employees the option to work from home, or even if it's like hot switching offices, is probably a good idea from a clean air and carbon emission reduction standpoint. However, I think it's going to be difficult to persuade companies to change their business model. As far as it affects the Moffett Park plan, I think we should actually have less office space there and more residential space because it's one of the last places where we have land because it's one of the last places where we have land that's available for that kind of high density housing in an area that doesn't already have an existing neighborhood.
Thank you. Omar?
Yeah, I think, you know, COVID-19 has really shown us a lot about what is possible that we didn't previously think was possible. Things like the lane closure, for instance, and working from home is another perfect example of that. And to that end, I think that we have a great opportunity to actually work with the companies that we have in Sunnyvale to help them feel empowered and give them incentives to have more work from home options available. And this is important because it helps the people that work there, and hopefully our own citizens that work there, but also it helps us deal with traffic. Because if you have more people working from home, you have less traffic. I think we should offer transportation demand management programs where if a company has a certain percentage of its workforce working from home, we give them incentives. Along with that, I think the city itself should have work from home options for its staff. And I say that because that is what I heard from the Sunnyvale Employees Association, who I am lucky enough to have been endorsed by, who asked that they wanted those options extended to them because before COVID-19, they were told it wasn't feasible. And now we realize it is actually very feasible.
Thank you. Thank you. So Omar, you'll go first with this next question, and it is on housing. It says, "What do you plan to do if elected to balance the housing needs of Sunnyvale residents?"
Yeah, I think this is, it might be actually one of the most important questions we tackle tonight. Because the big reason that I'm running is to fight for affordability. And I say that because my family, the entire time they lived in Sunnyvale, has been renting. And we've been renting because of how honestly impossible it is for people to buy houses in this region. I think that we need to increase the supply of housing within the city. We need to do it across the stock of Sunnyvale housing, not just focusing on the high income housing, which I think has been the trajectory, but also putting a renewed focus on low income and very low income housing units. Because we're not meeting our regional housing needs allocation numbers at all. On top of that, we really need to look into stacking housing on top of retail and having urban village plans, which will both increase housing, help with affordability, but also create a more walkable city, which helps us deal with environmental issues and strengthens the retail options within the city. And especially within District Six, because we have a food and retail desert up here and need more of those resources brought into this area of the city.
Thank you. Leah?
Yes, I agree. We have not really done a very good job in terms of increasing housing stocks for low income and very low income residents. In fact, things like the Lawrence Station Project, which is built on a transit corridor, which is part of the whole Bay Area, you know, housing initiative, still has market rate housing availabilities in terms of, and not very many below market rate units. So I think that any new projects going forward, we are actually going to have to take a long, hard, serious look at increasing below market rate housing allocations. I think the Moffett Park Plan would be one place we could do that because that is a prime transit corridor right there, the VTA light rail going right through it. The other issue we need to look at, of course, is rent stabilization for the mobile home park residents. So we don't increase the amount of homeless population, especially among the elderly and vulnerable people who are on fixed incomes because of disability. The other thing we need to look at is, you know, looking at zoning upgrades for multiplex and duplexes in certain areas.
Thank you. All right, so continuing along the theme of development, Leah, you'll go first. And so there's a preface and then going into the question. So it says, "There are demands for more commercial properties as well as more residential properties, especially high density housing for low income families." At the same time, there are people demanding to preserve the Sunnyvale we have today instead of ever more bigger and taller buildings. They gave me the quotes, I didn't put them there. Where do you stand with regards to future growth of Sunnyvale? More commercial growth, more residential growth, maintaining the status quo?
So what we need to look at is actually mixed use development. Most, you know, European cities and actually places like New York and stuff like that, that have retail and residential mix, make the city, make the area more walkable and more friendly to pedestrians and people using alternative modes of transportation. District Six especially is sort of the retail desert, as we've explained. We have one grocery store and that was only by the dint of the fact that the light industrial space was redeveloped into a residential and retail space. That needs to be the plan going forward. We need to have definitely mixed use and not compartmentalize our development into retail zones and residential zones only. Growth is going to happen, we need to make it sensible. Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
Thank you. Omar?
Yeah, I think what's important is smart growth, right? Because what we need to be doing is stopping urban sprawl, which is what we've seen in suburbs across the country. And so the big way to do that obviously is by having mixed use housing. Like I think both of us have been talking about extensively, where we're stacking housing on top of retail. It helps people because then you don't need to get into a car and burn fuel to go fifteen minutes across the city to other parts of the city just to get groceries, because those parts have been prioritized in the past. Along with that, we need to have increased density near transit so that people have options beyond just their cars, so that they can actually get into trains and buses that are going through. And we need to be looking at increasing density and having housing in Moffett Park because Moffett Park is giving us such a great vehicle and opportunity to give us more housing options, which helps us with supply, which helps us get more affordability across the market of Sunnyvale housing.
Thank you. So now we're going to change gears and we're going to talk a little bit about the City Hall and Civic Center. So this one, "The Civic Center renovation has experienced a lengthy public input and debate process. Please state whether you attended any of the public input meetings and state whether you feel the current plans are in line with that input and why." Omar?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was like
Sorry about that, but, um, well, I'll just be blunt. Unfortunately, I didn't attend any of the Civic Center meetings, primarily because they were happening while I was still in Ithaca studying at Cornell. But the Civic Center, I think, is something important for the city to continue doing right now. Especially because, you know, it's a greener building, Civic Center needs these repairs and upgrades. Right now, the current one has issues of mold, has employees that have to share cubicles. Along with that, you know, the Civic Center already has funds on hand. And so it's not going to be affected by the COVID crisis as much because those funds are already there. And it's a great opportunity for us to provide local jobs for local residents and help us increase the economic opportunities available for the city and sort of spur the, you know, the big changes and actions that we need right now.
Thank you. Leah?
Yeah, the, I agree, the Civic Center project is going to provide local jobs for an important purpose. That is to have a building which is up to the newer seismic standards, to have a building which meets green energy requirements, to have space for which our government to actually, you know, conduct its business in a safe manner rather than having areas with leakage and mold and the other issues that the city staff have been experiencing. And also, I think, you know, to have our, you know, public safety department and everything be brought up to newer, modern standards. So yes, I was not, unfortunately, again, like Omar, I was not a participant in the Civic Center public input. Regrettably, it wasn't on my radar a few years ago, so I somehow got left out of the loop. And maybe that's a fault of the public outreach on the project because I didn't see anything, I don't recall seeing anything about it for public input prior to that, so.
Okay, good. Well, we're going to continue a little bit more on this because there's a little bit of expansion that you've touched on, which I think is great. It says, "Do you agree," and Leah, you'll go first, "do you agree or disagree with the LED Platinum expenditure level? And what do you feel is a reasonable cost per square foot to expand?"
I'm not an engineer, so, and I'm not a Realtor. So, you know, explaining how much the cost per square foot to expand is a little outside of my job description. It's something I would have to definitely acquire knowledge about as to what is involved in that. But yes, I believe we should be pursuing GreenLeads Platinum standards. And we can start with the Civic Center and then we can move on to the city fleet vehicles, which should be electrified.
Good. Omar?
Yeah, echoing that, I also agree with the LEED Platinum standard and with the city's decision to move forward on that. Especially because we need to be doing more environmentally friendly and stable development. It's not something that we should like to have, but it's a necessity. And it's a necessity because it's on all of us to fight climate change. It really is the biggest problem of our generation and of all the generations to come. And I say that as someone who is part of Generation Z, so the issues and decisions we're making now are going to affect me the most. But also, you know, I think it's on the city to lead by example. And beyond just LEED standards, we should also be implementing REACH codes, which go beyond a lot of the codes that the county has mandated in terms of environmental sustainability and green development.
Thank you. Good, so now we'll change gears a little bit and go to small businesses, the topic, and we'll start with Omar. And this question is, "What are your plans to support small businesses to revitalize and encourage the life of the city beyond the downtown boundaries?"
Yes, okay, I'm excited to hear beyond the downtown boundaries because that was going to be the answer to my earlier question as well. We need to be thinking beyond downtown. And unsurprisingly, we need to be thinking about District Six and about North Sunnyvale. This is where we need new retail the most, this is where we need more small businesses. You know, we have so many giant corporations, which sure, it's never purpose, but we need small businesses, right? We need to be supporting those in our community. Along with that, COVID-19 has really put a strain on them. So as we move out of it, it's on the city to give public resources to support these small businesses, to help them through it. And if we're forced to go back into lockdown, it's on us to help them. And finally, as we have new development, we should be developing in a way that takes those small businesses into account and developing regionally, or in regions and areas within the city that support those small businesses through things like we've already mentioned, stacking housing on top of retail, creating density that's mixed use so that small businesses get that support, have people nearby and have a revitalized environment to thrive in.
Thank you. Leah?
I had Irish envy when I visited my sister in Dublin before the COVID immersions and crisis came down. And I was envious of the fact that she could just walk down her street and there were places that she could go where she could go to a restaurant or dry cleaners or food shopping or something like that. And District Six has been neglected. It's been mostly light industrial, we have a few areas which are exclusively retail, but I kind of think of them as sort of seventy-schick strip, you know, strip malls. And I would love to see that developed into better and more efficient retail space that makes it a truly walkable neighborhood that encourages people to get out and enjoy the area that they live in rather than having to drive down to El Camino Real every time you need something. So this silo, the siloing of retail and residential has to be, you know, eliminated from our city planning going forward, and we definitely need to look at mixed use residential retail.
Perfect, thank you. Stopped right on time, that was great. All right, so next question, we'll start with Leah and it's on parks. So how will you ensure that residents in Sunnyvale have equitable access to safe and enjoyable parks and open space? And do you think we need a ballot measure to require land use decisions to go to the voters regarding parks?
So, let me answer the last part first. I think ballot measures to have land use go to voters is difficult because it makes it difficult to actually have a development planning process. Certainly, we seek out and we want public input in all our development projects. And so, you know, as projects come forward, we want to see more residents, you know, putting their thoughts in. I remember going down to the Moffett Park Plan and putting up all my little sticky Post-it notes for what I wanted to see going on in that area, and that's the kind of participation that we need. As far as green spaces go, I love green spaces. What we need to get to them are safe and accessible bicycle and pedestrian routes to get to the green spaces that already exist. Also, we need to make some green spaces more attractive, especially like the Green Belt. So I would like to see like some California native plants or milkweeds or something to encourage monarch butterflies to come there, since we can't plant trees on the property due to the access routes for water and other utility service lines that go under that area.
Okay. Omar?
Yeah, I mean, I got my start in local government by serving on the city's Parks and Recreations Commission when I was eighteen. So parks are very near and dear to my heart, especially because that was how I fell in love with the city growing up. And to that end, I, you know, I don't think we need the ballot measure either. Primarily for the reason that we just heard, you know, it delays the process itself, makes it a lot more difficult to occur and to occur well and meaningfully. And along with that, you know, council has really shown already its value for parks and public land. We've seen increased acreage over the last few years of parks. Along with that, we have a two-thirds super majority requirement that council needs to meet in order to sell city property, which is already a very high threshold. So that already puts a stopper on just willy nilly getting rid of parks or public land. And finally, you know, I think what we need to be doing is also creating additional community spaces through the parks that we have, which is one thing I would prioritize if I'm on council.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go into redistricting and we will start with Omar. So Sunnyvale will have to redraw the map after the census. Do you support or oppose an independent redistricting commission and why? And if not an independent commission, how do you ensure fairness, quality, and an in-depth understanding on how to lead this process?
Yeah, I mean, I think I support it because primarily, redistricting is one of those areas that we've seen nationwide as being so prone to corruption and to gerrymandering and to voter suppression. It's really an issue of democracy itself, and I think we really fight for the soul of democracy when we fight against gerrymandering. I was very disheartened to see the Supreme Court case that legalized gerrymandering in some states. And so I think Sunnyvale has an opportunity to really show what democracy should look like, and that's why I support it. You know, I think it needs to be equalized across different socioeconomic lines, making sure that there's proper representation across not just your income level, but also race and ethnic backgrounds. And along with that, you know, I think it, what the district process has shown us is that having good districts leads to good candidates running. I mean, I really have to give a compliment to my opponent here that we're both running and I think we both represent a change of pace of who normally runs for council. So making sure that that culture is sustained is very important.
Thank you. Leah?
I agree, neither Omar or I would have dipped our toes into these political waters without the benefit of redistricting. And I am completely in favor of independent commissions on redistricting. I think it shows that we can protect our democracy in terms of representation. We need to ensure that the kind of gerrymandering that we've seen in other states does not occur here. And, and, you know, that's what truly frightens me, that the process for doing that kind of underhanded map drawing is getting so sophisticated using statistical analysis, of which I'm very aware, to dilute the votes of underrepresented communities even further or to make safe seats. That's not an appropriate thing. Government is about representation of the citizenry, not about preserving the status quo.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so changing gears directly here, we're going to traffic safety. We'll start with Leah.
Okay.
Safety. What will you do to help improve traffic and pedestrian safety in District Six and throughout the city neighborhoods?
So for one thing, at signalized intersections, I would love to see pedestrian leading signals at pretty much any signalized intersection which has a pedestrian crossing. And the reason why is those cars which are making those right turns on reds, a lot of them have a tendency to roll through and it's very dangerous for people stepping off the curb. Having a leading pedestrian signal indicate, you know, shows that the person is in the crosswalk where you can see them, however safe that is, in that kind of thing. With our Vision Zero and our Active Transportation Plan, of course, we are looking at those highly dangerous intersections that we've identified as part of the ATP to have processes to, you know, upgrade them, to make them safer. And then the other thing I would like to see is that on routes that are designated for bicycle or, you know, bicycle use that we lower the speed limits on those routes because putting paint on the road on Fair Oaks is not going to make it safer for people who are not as brave a cyclist as I am.
Thank you. Omar?
Yeah, I mean, I'm very proud of Sunnyvale for having the Vision Zero Plan as well. I think it really shows that our priorities are in the right place, but we need action on it. But, you know, we already talked about briefly the tragic accident that occurred last week on Tasman. So this issue is one we are facing constantly and we are facing right now. And that accident actually really, you know, hit home for me because one of the people hit was a teenager. And when I was a teenager and I used to bike everywhere, I would bike down Lawrence, turn onto Tasman and was struck by how unsafe those streets were. So to that end, you know, I really support Vision Zero, I've supported VPAC's recommendations to the Active Transportation Plan. We need to create a low stress network throughout the city, make sure we're connecting the bicycle routes, making sure we're creating safe routes to school and work. I think if we want to get people to be biking more than driving, people need to be, people need to feel safe doing it. If they don't If they don't feel safe, then they're not gonna do it, and we're not gonna be able to solve any of the other issues that we're talking about, not just traffic, but also environmental sustainability, and also just the happiness of the city as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So you will go first, Omar, and this is on communicating. How will you increase community outreach, engagement, and participation in city business, especially on hot topics that significantly affect a neighborhood?
Yes, I mean, I think the first thing is one of those lessons we've learned from COVID, which is making sure that city meetings are livestreamed and not just livestreamed, but are available for public input electronically. I think we should, you know, even after we reopen and we have meetings in the council chambers, still have some sort of Zoom functionality or look into it. Have a Granicus e-comment function available so that people can call in, can go on their computer and somehow electronically have their comments filed. Along with that, I'm really inspired by the Facebook Live sessions that Mayor Klein has been doing. I think if I am lucky enough to be elected, I will also host town halls electronically so that citizens and people within the district and within Sunnyvale can have easy access to their representatives on council and make sure that their voices are being heard beyond just the meetings themselves. And I think this is really important because a lot of the big decisions that happen, happen sometimes behind closed doors, not because they're designed that way to leave people out, but because it's just so hard to come through to them and to have your voice heard.
Thank you. Leia.
Yes, I agree 100% with the fact that what we are doing now with in terms of electronic involvement for people in the, in the public space has actually resulted in more civic engagement, not less. We actually have more people coming to our BPAC meetings virtually than when we ever hosted them live, which is terrific, except when, you know, so, you know, anything which, you know, increases civic engagement, I'm all for. The other thing we need to have is we need to have civic leaders or community engagement leaders for specific underserved communities which go out and contact those communities and ensure we bring them into the government engagement process. We also need to have concurrent translation channels available in different language formats so we make sure that we include those people who are not, you know, facile in English language as a primary language are also included and can comment on a public forum.
Thank you. All right. So our next topic is about land. So Leia, you'll go first. And this is the legislature in Sacramento has been moving on bills to move land use control to the state level. Please state your position on local control versus not and why? And any public activities you have been engaged with that demonstrate your position.
So by land use, I'm wondering if they're meaning, you know, specifically lots which are owned by the state are now going to be allocated back over to local control? Or that there will be more control given to locally municipalities for allocation of land use by those municipalities? Because those are like two different things.
Yeah, let me clarify for you, and then we'll restart your clock because that's a very good point. I happen to know the context of this question because the person gave me a little bit deeper context. Think of the VAOCO situation, you've got an SB 35 that's coming in and taking over control of what's being done at a local level. So from that perspective, are you in favor more of local control versus state control? Does that help?
Yes, yes. I think local control is beneficial to the people who are going to be most affected by the decisions made at the local level. I mean, all politics is local as it starts out. So I think giving control of that back to the local municipalities is important because then you're actually serving the community that's going to be most affected by any changes which are made to land use allocations, whether that is allowing, you know, dual accessory units or, you know, multiplex units on property or rezoning, or even public land use in terms of parks and recreation, anything like that. I believe that, yes, local control is important, except perhaps for fire suppression, where we still need to have like a state wildfire support agency.
Thank you. Omar. Oh, you're muted. Omar, you're muted.
My bad.
Turn the clock. Okay.
Okay. Um, sorry about that. I guess when it comes to Zoom, there's still some things for working the bugs out on. But, you know, I'm glad Terry you mentioned SB 35 because when it comes to Senator Scott Wiener's bill, I actually support the intent of it, which was an attempt to get cities across the state to actually do their fair share of housing development because we need to increase the supply of housing if we want to make affordability actually happen. But I still firmly believe that we need to maintain our local control. And the reason for that is that Sunnyvale has actually been leading the pack, so to speak, on development and on production. You know, we're one of the leaders in the Bay Area of housing, doing far better than some of the other cities. And so I'm worried that if we give up that control of it to the state, right now it might work in our favor, but later off, the state decides that they want to go in a different direction than what Sunnyvale needs and then what Sunnyvale, you know, Sunnyvale citizens actually want, then we lose out, you know, then we end up hurting. We need to be making sure we're still meeting all of our development needs, that we're meeting our arena numbers. And the only way to do that and make sure it happens is by maintaining local control.
Thank you. All right. Now we are going to start with Omar and talk about airplane noise. What will you do and what won't you do to help reduce airplane noise in our city?
Yeah, I mean, airplane noise is a huge issue. And I said it because growing up in Sunnyvale, I used to hear it all the time. It's one of those things that occasionally would even wake you up at night, especially because we have Moffett Field right next to us and you have all of these high-tech planes just zooming by. So airplane noise is an issue. And the approach that we need to take is a regional one. We need to partner with other cities in the area because airplane, you know, legislation is controlled federally. So the cities don't have direct authority over airplane noise. Unfortunately, I wish it did, and it kind of goes back to the local control issue. But because it's a federal issue, the only way that we can be taken seriously is if we band together with other cities and really attack that issue, you know, really advocate to our FAA, you know, director and to the representative that's nearby so that we can get that issue dealt with by the federal government.
Good. Leia.
Yeah, I've been many a victim of those giant C-130s landing at Moffett Field or the helicopters hovering overhead for eons. And Omar is completely right. Unfortunately, air traffic patterns are completely controlled by the FAA. They dictate what the flight paths are. They dictate where, you know, what the routes are. However, if we band together as a region, we can go to the FAA and demand alterations in the flight path for certain flights or changes in timing or, or, you know, whatever we need to, to get, you know, some of the noise mitigated. But we're, we are kind of over a barrel on that one in that, like, it's a federal agency which controls flight.
Thank you. Yes. All right. Now, we've touched on this topic, but we'll go a little deeper in this one. Do you favor reallocating funds away from active police patrols and other law enforcement activities by our police? And if yes, how do we maintain safety in our community? And sorry, I didn't say who's going first, so let me start with Leia.
Okay. So our, our public safety department, as, as we said, is unique in the fact that we are a three-in-one. We are fire, we are EMS, and we are law enforcement. And so that kind of training actually gives our public safety department, you know, the training and ability to deal with people in crisis better than other cities which have compartmentalized these functions. If anything, I think we should be going out and going to other cities and showing them the Sunnyvale model because if we can bring that to other areas, perhaps we'll have, you know, fewer incidences. But otherwise, I think we definitely need crisis response units to deal with people who are in mental crises or who are experiencing other kinds of crises, whether associated with domestic violence or not. We also need that Citizens Commission Oversight Civilian Commission on Police Conduct to make sure that any issues of, you know, possible abuse of power are being addressed. Sunlight is always the best disinfectant in that regard.
Thank you. Omar.
Yeah, I mean, when I went to the Black Lives Matter protests in San Francisco, I was pretty disturbed with what I saw. The way that San Francisco's police department responded to it was with military gear, was by brutalizing black and brown bodies and innocent protesters. And if I lived in those sit in either San Francisco or San Jose, I would be all for defunding them. But we're lucky, we're so, so lucky that Sunnyvale's Public Safety Department is not those. We have a combined Public Safety Department of Fire and Police and EMS. And at Sunnyvale's Black Lives Matter protests, they didn't show up in riot gear. They didn't start fights. They weren't throwing tear gas. But we need to listen to our black and brown citizens. And to that end, there are some demands that we need to implement. We have to have an oversight commission similar to the one that Palo Alto has that can actually have oversight over the police force. Along with that, I want to ban the use of facial recognition technology because it's proven to be unreliable. I think we also need council approval on all new equipment acquisitions so that we don't end up with a militarized police force 10, 15, 20, so on years from now.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So let's see, the next topic, we will go with Omar first. And this one is on transparent government. How will you make city government more transparent and responsive to your constituents?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm gonna end up echoing some of the points I made earlier. Transparency and communication go hand in hand. So keeping the meetings as open as possible, and that includes keeping them as accessible as possible. It's not everyone who can just show up on a Tuesday evening and stay till 1:00 AM, you know, in a city building. So having electronic means of access available is extremely important. Making sure we keep the meetings on Zoom, even when we're back in person, having meetings is gonna be vital. Doing, like I mentioned, Facebook Lives, having both the council meetings and commission meetings, and having, you know, individual council members or the mayor have Facebook Live streams so that people can stay informed on it. And then having better, you know, access and ability to have public input on the meetings is also gonna lead to transparency because people can have their voices heard directly and not just hope that their representatives are representing them correctly 100% of the time.
Thank you. Leia.
I agree with communications with one caveat. Not only should any reports presented by city staff be done in English, but they should also automatically be translated into the other major languages of the city, which would probably be Tagalog, Vietnamese, Spanish, and Korean. So, you know, it's not fair that we are excluding people who are not native English speakers or readers from the governmental process. So we need to make sure that we are bringing in these groups, you know, in whatever means possible because we can't really effectively have a city government which is meeting the needs of its citizens by excluding these citizens from the process. The other thing is, is that, you know, quality and compliance is my bailiwick. So I would like to take a look at the city processes that are involved in project planning and everything else and see if we can't streamline whatever processes we need to streamline and then make clear, you know, whatever citations or what we need to in any city report presented by city staff as to where the information is coming from, so everybody is on the same page.
Thank you. Okay, this topic is on the environment. We'll start with you, Leia. So to fulfill the goals of Sunnyvale's Climate Action Plan and Vision Zero Plan and Active Transportation Plan will be expensive to implement. What programs would you support we implement in the next four years to make significant progress?
So first things first, we need to increase our electrification process throughout the city. District Six actually cannot use solar in most of the mobile home parks because the, the electrical infrastructure will not support it. I can't even get a, you know, a vehicle, electrical vehicle charging station put into my unit because, you know, the, the number of amps allotted to each unit, you know, won't support it. You know, I can't even electrify my shed to put my bicycle, electric bike in there to charge. I have to bring it into my living room. So we need to work with PG&E to bring, to modernize the electrical infrastructure, especially in District Six. The other thing is, is all those open parking lots out there, I just see an opportunity for solar power generation there, okay? You know, if we had solar panels above all those parking spaces, we could be generating electricity. If we developed battery storage, we could be storing that electricity for use during high-peak demand. So there's a lot of, of green opportunity out there for businesses, for development, to utilize.
Thank you. Omar.
Yeah, I mean, my answer to the question is gonna be twofold. The first part is in terms of, yeah, what we need to implement. And the city passed CAP 2.0, the Climate Action Plan, which outlines strategies that need to occur for us to get to our ambitious goal of greenhouse gas reductions within the next few decades. And to that end, you know, it's really on us to actually implement those strategies, things like electric infrastructure build-outs, having the electric infrastructure to support people moving over to electric vehicles, you know, having better access to public transportation and having electric scooters available. But when it comes to the framework of costs, which was mentioned, you know, I don't think that the question we should be asking is what costs too much? Because if we're not paying in dollars right now, then we will be paying in 40 years with other things. You know, we'll be paying with our lungs and our air, with natural disasters, with our property going underwater, and so much more. And those are the costs that I'm worried about, not just the monetary costs.
Thank you. Thank you. So one of the questions that came in is, and we'll start with you, Omar, is would you have run for city council if Sunnyvale had not gone to a district system?
Yeah, I think the answer is no, I probably would not have run because the way that I think elections can sometimes be designed is to keep out people who are not normally represented. You know, it's not surprising that if I'm elected, I'll be the first ever South Asian to serve on the city council. I'll also be the first ever Muslim to serve on the city council in a city that's 40% Asian, that has a huge Muslim population and a huge South Asian population. This is also why I supported independent redistricting because we need systems that are actually accessible and give people the opportunity to get involved in government. This is my first time running for office. I'm running as a, you know, fresh new college grad. And if it weren't for the accessibility that the district system provides, I wouldn't be doing it. And on top of that, our district needs to be represented on council. All of council right now, and most councils historically, have not had people who lived in North Sunnyvale. And because of that, North Sunnyvale has not gotten the same level of resources or really engagement that it needs. We should be bringing more city resources up here. We should have meetings in the Lakewood Branch Library that seem to be completed. I'm hitting time, but I think you get the gist.
Thank you for spotting that. Thank you. Good. Leia.
You know, as a woman, it's hard enough running for office, but to have to persuade an entire city to overcome whatever biases that they have against, you know, someone who does not have experience directly in city government, who has, you know, is not wealthy by any means to run for city council, who, you know, it would have been inconceivable for me. And so I am very grateful for the opportunity that, that redistricting has to, to give a representation to the council for someone who lives in this district. Because I personally encountered the verbal pat on the head when I brought up issues that were specific to the district because I was always given the excuse of, we represent X% of the population of the city as a whole, and we have to think of the city as a whole, and that always left out this area. But now we are still X% of the population, but we are X% of the population with a voice.
Thank you. This is both of you. This is really interesting to hear the perspective, especially as we're all new in this. So now we're gonna go to this final question, and you're gonna get 90 seconds on this one. And since Leia went first on the opening question, Omar, you get to go first on the closing question. So this one is, would you please state and answer a question you wish you had been asked?
Yeah, um, you know, it's interesting because I, I know we talked about this question beforehand as well. So I was playing it out, and actually does touch a little bit on the question we just had, which is, what actually spurred me to run for office in the first place and do this? Because running for office is a little bit crazy. You're really throwing yourself out there. And for me, my dedication to public service started young. I mentioned it a bit, but some of my earliest memories are waking up on Saturday mornings, creating protest signs with my sisters, then driving up to San Francisco and going to protest, you know, going to things like protesting the Iraq War, protesting for our Muslim community. And so this ethos of government and politics being a place of survival and a place that necessitates engagement has always been there for me. It's what led me to get involved with my Conda back in 2014. It's what led me to join, you know, become my student council president in high school. It's what led me to join Evan Low's office. It's what led me to become one of the youngest ever appointed officials in the city history when I was appointed to the Parks and Recreations Commission at 18. And it's what led me to decide to run for office now because there are so many issues that need fixing. And if we're not the ones doing it, and if we're not at the table, then we're on the menu. And I'm running now to pull up that seat on the table.
Thank you. Thank you. Leia.
I completely agree. Actually, it's like, who the heck are you to be running for office? Why are you doing this? You know, it's like, it's not in your background. You know, after serving two and a half years in the BPAC, I realized that if I really wanted to see the changes that I wanted to see, that I thought were going to be needed to make the city, you know, move forward to the future, even if we had to sort of drag it kicking and screaming in some points, that I was gonna have to be, step up and be the Asian for change. And, you know, and it's hard. And, you know, a- and it's hard. I mean, it's, it's been a really steep learning curve. I'm not in it to be a career politician. I'm in it to make a better world. And that's always been my focus. Whether it's, you know, I've been working in public health or, you know, whether I've been working in the pharmaceutical industry or on the BPAC or being a bicycle champion or, you know, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, you name it, I, you know, it's important to me. It's important to me as a, an important, uh, as a thing to lead the world better than we found it. That's a basic philosophy. And, and not only that, is that we, my feeling is you're here to serve your fellow man, not just yourself. And by serving your fellow man, you make the world better for everyone, including yourself. And so, you know, uh, i- it might be like sort of Snow White with the Tweety Birds and everything like that, but that's what I really want to see. And I really think that this kind of, um, you know, change in our political structure, it, it gives me hope now. So it fills my, you know, uh, hippie child heart, you know, with, with hope for the future, that we can do this. And we can do this by uplifting ourselves and others at the same time.
Thank you. Well, thank you both so much. This was a really interesting conversation, getting to hear your perspectives on things. So we really appreciate you taking the time to share your insights with us. And, uh, I'm, what I'd like to do is just have you wave goodbye and then I'm gonna have you pull your, your videos down and then I'm gonna bring up the screen that has your website so people can get more information. So.
Sure.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, you too. This is great. And so, um, as I mentioned, I want to share this, this screen here. So you've heard from Omar Dean and from Leia Melvin. And once again, we encourage you strongly to go to their websites to learn more about them. Omar for Sunnyvale.com and Leia for Sunnyvale.com. So do please take some time to do that. Once again, thanking the candidates. I thank my fellow league members, uh, the volunteers behind the scenes. And thank you for attending tonight. We hope you've enjoyed this. We hope that you, uh, will remember to vote. As you know, it's time to vote on November four, November third. Uh, democracy is a participant's sport. You have to participate in this. So we'll wrap it up here. I'm gonna leave you with this screen. I think it's, um, once again, full of great information. This recording will be at our website, L W B C S dot org. But there are a lot of great websites on this page, so screenshot it, take a moment with your camera, uh, take a picture of it. And then we will say goodbye. Thank you.